This is what our third Zoom City Council meeting? And we're getting better all the time. So, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it very much. So with that being said, it is just about five o'clock. So we'll go ahead and get started. Call the meeting to order. Mike, you want to do roll call?
Sure thing. Counselor Fender.
Here.
Counselor O'Toole.
Here.
Counselor Paulson.
Here.
Counselor Platt.
Here.
Counselor Boehner.
Here.
And Mayor Gibson.
I'm here.
All right, all present.
Okay, let's start with a moment of silence before we go to pledge of allegiance. There's a lot going on, but I feel like we're making progress. We have to be thankful for where we are. We haven't been hit hard. And we just have so much to be thankful for. So moment of silence, please. Okay, Mike, I see a flag behind you there. We can do pledge of allegiance.
Or, you know.
Well, let's keep it official.
All right.
Let's do it. Everybody can see the flag over there, kinda? There we go.
There we go.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the United States. May all be seated.
All right.
Boy, that was official.
Those pledges, they're a little awkward sometimes.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So with that being said, we have approval for minutes from our work session on February 19th, 2020. We need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Did you get who said motion?
Jamie, you hit her to the punch. I have a motion by Counselor Platt, second by Counselor Fender. By show of hands, all those in favor, just raise your hand and I'll do the counting. I have one, two, three, four, five, and six. So that's a unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you guys very much. So we don't have any special presentations and we'll move right to open forum. We welcome public comment at this time. The council will be happy to receive your comment pertaining to items on the agenda, including questions, suggestions, complaints, and items for future agendas. Each person's time will be limited to three minutes. Do we have anyone?
Mr. Mayor, at this time, we have no public comments as of 5:02.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ronnie. Well, we'll move right on. We don't have any unfinished business. And we'll get right into the new business. We have 8.1 Resolution R 2020-07, a resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenue. Mike, you're talking us through that?
Essentially, this is a resolution that we do every year that basically indicates that the city is electing to receive state revenues by way of taxes. Income tax, property tax, those sort of things.
I move approval of the resolution.
Do we need to post it? Does anybody need to see it?
I can share my screen anyways. Hang on one sec.
Yeah, let's just take a quick look at it and make sure that everybody can kind of get a visual of what we're talking about.
Maybe.
You got him so good at it, Mike. Come on now.
Well, it's the same motion we have every year.
Right. I think mine is moving very slowly. Is it sharing yet or is it still?
It's thinking.
It says Michael has started.
He's thinking.
Right, it's slow, huh?
Yeah, it's pretty slow today. Okay, so here's the resolution. It is Resolution 2020-07. And it is in the simplest form, straight from the state of Oregon.
Do I need to repeat my motion?
Sure.
I move that we approve Resolution 2007, electing to receive state revenue sharing funds.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Raise my raise of hands.
Hang on, I can't see you. All right.
Everybody raise their hand.
Bear with me here. I'll get a count here in one second. Okay, I have Counselor. Oh, who was the second on that?
I was Fender.
Okay, gotcha. All right, and vote. Everybody raise a hand. I have one, two, three, four, five, six. Unanimous vote for approval.
Okay.
Any chance for dissension? All right, so next resolution is Resolution 2020-08. It identifies the services that the city provides.
And this is a standard annual thing. Nothing new or different about this, Mike?
That's correct.
Okay.
I move approval of Resolution 2020-08. Go ahead.
Micah, I got you on that.
Whoa.
All right, all those in favor, by show of hands, please. I have one, two, three, four, five. Smart, are you in? Are you frozen?
Yes, my hand is up. Can you see me?
Yeah, you're frozen on my video. So, all right, that's a vote of 6-0. So that's unanimous vote to approve that.
Okay. Thank you. So approved. Moving right along. We are cooking. All right, Mike, you want to do 8.3?
Sure thing. So 8.3 is our big one. That's the budget. So this is a resolution for adopting budget for fiscal year 2020-21. Most of the members of the Budget Committee, all members of Budget Committee unanimously voted to recommend approval of the budget as proposed herein. The budget in your packets is, starts on page 10. With the resolution on the front page, you'll see the general overviews here from the General Fund. Total operating revenue is of 4.2 million. You'll see the Street Funds. Total appropriations for everything, all accounts, is 6.7 million. In contingency, we're still holding about a million to 1.2 million in contingencies for funds that are reserved for future funding. What we do say is that about half of that is what it takes us to get through to the point where we start receiving revenues between the months of April, May, until back to like November. So we'd like to keep that in there for a rainy day fund and just kind of general operating revenues. Are there any questions so far? Nothing has changed since the Budget Committee. So if there's any particular line items, I'm happy to go through and identify them.
Mike, the only thing that comes to mind is all of the conversations surrounding relief funding from the CARES Act and those kinds of things.
Okay.
We know that we're going to take a hit, but we, it's been difficult to determine how much of a hit we might take. But my understanding is that we kind of baked in some money to compensate for what we might take a hit on. You want to talk about that piece of it a little bit?
Sure. So when we looked at our budget, we knew we were going to take some hit. So we reduced our beginning fund balance approximately $150,000 right off the bat. That still to be determined on if we're actually going to realize those lost revenues before the end of July. But it looks like we're pretty much on track to essentially lose upwards of $100,000 to $200,000 worth of revenue this fiscal year that we were counting on previously. With this budget document that's before you, we had taken about $150,000 out of that and started with a beginning fund balance of and less than a, we took $150,000 off of our beginning fund balance to account for any lost revenues that we were projecting. On top of that, we projected our budget for passports and hospitality and gas tax to be reduced significantly due to the coronavirus. So we, I believe we've done the best we can to capture what our projected losses are. That being said, we are in the middle of a pandemic and anything can change. So we're doing our best to present a balanced budget and keep our contingencies at current levels.
And that's probably the best we can do. Has there been any more? Do you have any field for franchise fees? The only one that's come forward and talked to us about it was Pride. Any more input from them?
No more input from them, but we probably won't see or hear from them until July, which will be their second quarter, I believe. So I believe what we'll see from Pride is a reduction in commercial garbage fees that would have been collected, which would then result in a reduced franchise fee that correlates to us. Since we take a percentage of their overall revenues, as their revenues are then decreased due to the lack of commercial garbage collection, then of course our franchise fees would be equally decreased based on the amount of revenues that they're bringing in.
Right.
So I'm guessing, to be honest with you, about a 30% reduction in franchise fees from that. I don't think we'll see any franchise fee reductions from PGE or Frontier. Just the other one is Frontier, who just went bankrupt and sold out to ZipFiber.
Right, exactly.
And so I believe Mac has worked it out with ZipFiber to come in and replace those potentially lost franchise fees. But I haven't seen any projections on what those might be.
Okay. And then as far as the latest information I saw on the CARES relief funding for lost or additional expenditures for supporting the coronavirus, meaning the expenditures for PPEs and those kinds of things. That's still undetermined, you know, because to be able to get any relief, it's very specific. And it almost sounds like you have to have some real documentation, documented expenditures in order to then apply for that relief. One of the letters that was sent out under, over the signature of the regional mayors was to think about coming up with some kind of formula, a formula-based approach for small cities, rather than having every small city trying to apply with a whole lot of detail and paperwork and red tape to come up with a formula-based funding for all of the small cities to get at least something to be able to support those expenditures. I don't know where that's going to go. I don't even know if it's been determined that that is possible. But as mayors, we kind of like that idea, rather than having us as a small city and many other small cities scrambling around, trying to come up with all this documentation to apply for a grant. Let's just make it some kind of rate-based opportunity to give something more similar to a stimulus check to small cities. So that's being worked on, but I don't know if that's going to become a reality.
Correct, yeah. The only thing I heard really didn't sound very promising for us.
Right, no, I agree. I agree.
It was kind of, they won't reimburse any lost revenues.
Right.
They'll reimburse expenses that went to like PPE or coronavirus-related specifics. They might reimburse portions of police calls or responses that were coronavirus-related.
Right.
But overall, it didn't sound very promising for us.
Well, and that's spot on, Mike. I, I think we're fortunate because I, you know, from what I'm gathering is that we haven't really been hurt really, really bad. Okay, I mean, as it stands now, with the reopening starting up and the possibility of some activity going on, and maybe all of you should know, we might as well say this right now, that the plan is for Washington County to apply to Governor Brown for reopening. That application is going to be filed this coming Friday. And for Washington County to start the reopening process under Phase 1, and then of course in the Phase 2. So we're going to see some activity. And as we talked about before, the first piece that we, City Hall would start engaging in would be municipal court, right? To start that process, going to get that revenue stream back on track, which would make sense, right, Mike? Is that, am I speaking?
Courts and passports.
Right.
We'll have to limit the number of people that we can actually accept in the lobby. And of course, we'll have to work on social distancing scenarios here within City Hall. But I think we can at least get through the courts, which are backlogged now for a couple of months now. And also passports, which we can open up for intake, but we're going to have to limit the number of people that we allow into the lobby.
Right, exactly. Well, it's good. And I brought all of this up just from a financial perspective. Those are the things that we're taking a look at first so that we can get things flowing again once we get the green light. So we'll go back to the budget piece and any other conversation surrounding the budget?
Instead of going through it line by line, I figure if any of the counselors, we've already reviewed this in pretty pretty good depth in the Budget Committee meetings. If there's any other questions or you have concerns or something, I could go to that particular point. Otherwise, I don't really see any point in really wasting a lot of time going through it if you're fine with it.
Okay. Any questions before we ask for a motion and a second? Okay, let's go.
Make a motion that we accept the budget as presented by the Budget Committee. So, 2020, 2021.
It's a perfect, if I could just get you to name the resolution for me, Counselor Platt? Do you have it before you?
I don't have it before me.
Okay, it's, I'll give it to you. It's Resolution R 2020-09.
Resolution R 2020-09.
You got it.
Okay, good job.
Second.
Who did the second?
Micah.
Okay, thank you, Micah. Okay. Let us know when you're ready for a show of hands, Mike.
I'm ready.
All right, all in favor?
I have Counselor Boehner, Counselor Fender, Counselor O'Toole, Counselor Platt, Counselor Paulson, and Mayor Gibson. So that'd be unanimous approval. Any dissenters that I missed?
Nope. Okay, so approved. Okay, we'll move right on to 8.4, the CDBG letter of assignment.
All right, every year we get to produce a letter of assignment for who pulls the lucky straw to be on the Community Development Block Grant Review. I believe right now it's Counselor Paulson, right?
It is.
All right.
And Mike, are you going to continue that process?
Yeah, I'm fine with it. And since I'm already familiar with the processes for all the voting in CBDG, I'm happy to stay on.
Okay.
Hey, Mike, this is Jamie. Can you put me down as an alternate since I'm also familiar previously having served in that capacity? I think if Micah can't, you know, make a meeting, I'm happy to sit in in that role. I think it would be really hard for someone to be an alternate who isn't, who hasn't served on that committee previously.
Very true. And, and what we're going to have to do, and I don't think we finalize this, once we get our other counselor in place, we're going to have to review our assignments so that we can refresh that whole list and make sure that we have everybody in place for primaries and alternates, okay?
Agreed.
Okay, so we, do we just need a motion to approve this assignment?
Motion to appoint Micah as primary and Jamie as sec, or alternate, and I think we're good.
Okay.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all right. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six. Unanimous vote, all right. You guys are too easy on this.
Well, we're just cooking right along. So I, so moved and there are no dissension. So we'll move on to 8.5, consider city council appointment.
Okay, so you want me to kind of give a little bit of perspective here?
I like your perspectives, Mike. So why don't you just, you're on a roll anyway, so you might as well go for it.
All right, well, we had an interview committee who had a chance to sit down and conduct some Zoom meetings with all four candidates. Of the four candidates, we were very happy with the qualifications and, you know, the general mindset of every candidate that was out there. We were really impressed. After, you know, a short discussion, I think we had narrowed it down from four to where we got to a top two. And at that point in time, we had decided based on experience, based on location and a few other things that we had limited it down to Kate and Shawna as our primary targets for this position. Heather, we really appreciated everything that you had to put. We loved the boat dock idea and a lot of the other points that you had brought in. But when we had Kate and Shawna and their backgrounds and their different fields, we felt that both of those were really, really high, high value for what we were looking for right at this moment. But like we said, we really encourage everybody to run for office here in November. And so we eliminated down to those two. And so you have Kate, who is an educational teacher at Tuality. Is that right, Kate? If I'm going off of memory here?
I did teach at Tuality, yes. I'm not right now.
Okay, and then we had Shawna, who is in real estate. Both members come highly recommended. They even had people calling us over the last few weeks to recommend them individually. I'm not going to make a decision on which one I like the best. But I'm going to leave that to you tonight. So of the group, though, these two were our top two contenders. And I will leave it at that for you, counselors, to render a decision.
I, and this is what I have to say about it, you know, it's, it's a real honor. And I don't know that I've ever seen this. I've been with the council in one form or another since 2008. The interest that we're getting, the love, the high quality of candidates that we have now is best I've ever seen. And I mean that sincerely. We know that Mark, I don't know if he can hear me, but Mark did interview for the open spot as well, but has decided that he is not going to, he's going to remove his name from the hat because he doesn't have any intention of running in November for a permanent position. And I clearly understand that. Shawna, currently you're on the Planning Commission, correct? You're helping us, you're supporting us. And this is the way my mind works. We have a very unique situation right now with the council where we have basically representation from almost all of the major locations within the city. So what we have is, we have the Highlands, we have KCCA, we have representation out of the Edgewater community. John Boilston, who left, was out of, what is it, Bedford-type location, not part of Kings, I mean, Edgewater. But I like the idea of having representation from all of those major spots. So the tiebreaker for me was twofold, is that Shawna's already supporting us on the Planning Commission. And Kate is from the Bedford location. And I think it would be ideal to fill that spot with that location. That's my vote. That's the way I see it. And I'm not downplaying anything. And Heather, you know, for you, you know, it's just, you know, you have to make a decision at some point in time. But I have to say, reinforce what Mike said. Running for this position in November, we're going to have three positions and potentially six, five candidates, which is wonderful. And what Mike said, and I, this is very, very important. We're still going to be in a situation where campaigning is not going to be a real possibility because of this virus, the pandemic situation. So the best thing that you can do if you decide to run is to get your information in the voter's pamphlet. It'll cost you $50, but at the same time, that's how people will know something about you. So don't hesitate to do that. So with all of that being said, I'm leaning toward Kate, but I need some feedback from the rest of the council on my thought process so we can make a decision. There is no wrong choice, period.
I'll definitely second the mayor on that. There's really no wrong choice.
Yeah.
All, all three candidates were solid. I'd be happy to work with any of them. So, you know, it was, it was a pleasure interviewing and working with them. And I think all three of them would do great. But I think the group, the group of interviewees afterwards in our discussion, we narrowed it down to these two here. And, you know, the mayor did voice that having Kate from the Castle Oak South area would kind of mirror where Counselor Boilston was. But either way, I don't think you can go wrong.
So I'll just jump in as well and just say that I am extremely ecstatic at the caliber of applicants that we've got. I think that it really shows that all of our efforts in, in really building a sense of community that encompasses the entirety of King City and not just traditional King City is really paying off. And I really applaud all the applicants for wanting to get involved in the community. I also agree, I mean, this is a desperately difficult choice because everyone is so qualified. And I would love to have all of you join us, even Mark, don't drop, you know, even if he didn't drop out. Um, so, uh, uh, mayor, I'm going to be, um, divisive a little. And, um, just, I will say that, um, I think this is hard to do the tiebreakers. I appreciate what you're saying with Bedford, and of course, there's no, um, there's no wrong answer. I do think that, um, in the past, we have, um. We have given weight to, um, those who have served previously. And so for me, the tiebreaker is just going to be the fact that, um, Shawna has already, um, gotten involved and gotten onto the committee. The, uh, plant, is it the planning commission or the budget committee? Um, and so for me, I, you know, that's, the only thing I can hang my hat on is, is gonna be that. So, um, I'll, I'll put a vote forward for Shawna. And again, I really applaud all the applicants and I really hope that you, um, run, that you get involved in, um, in different ways. I will, I will let everyone know that, um, in, in my capacity, in the foundation, I've reached out and invited everyone. Um, that should not sway any vote here, but just, I, I just love that we have, uh. Thirsty people for community involvement and in whatever form they choose to continue, I applaud that, those efforts, so.
This is where it gets not, I'll, I'll take input from anyone else and then we're gonna have to figure out how to make this decision.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, um, as the sole representative from the non, from the senior population here in old King City. I, I agree with Jamie that I think it's important, uh, to have involvement. With the city, I think it gives you a step up in terms of the learning curve when you get on the council. So my vote, and it has nothing to do with either candidate, in fact, I hope that that candidate will consider getting on our planning commission. But I think it, it will really give, uh, Shawna a leg up in terms of, of the learning curve. I know how hard it is to get up to speed on the council. And I think, as I said, I think having been on the planning commission gives you a leg up.
Thank you, Gretchen.
I, just to, I, I think I would echo both Jamie and Gretchen's, uh, thoughts there. As far as, I, I definitely see the benefit of having different geographic areas represented, uh. From all the candidates reading through, uh, it's a hard choice, uh, but I think the previous experience with Shawna, uh, on the planning commission. Is a, it is a huge help, so, um, that, that would be, be my, my thoughts and my choice.
Good. This is why we do it this way, you know, and I'm gonna tell you right now. That I have total confidence in this council to make really good decisions. We've been doing it, and this is no different. So this is not something that any of us should feel uncomfortable with. That's why we have this dialogue. We have good thought process on why, uh, one is important, uh, why another feature is important. So, uh, Dave, you wanna add anything?
Well, I think I would, would echo, um, a lot of what I've heard. I don't personally know either person, but, um, I do think that it's an advantage. To have the experience with the planning commission. And I think that, uh, maybe it's just kind of the tipping point.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, again, um, great opportunity for all of us to kind of look at what, um, what, what is open here. Adding to the discussions that we have going on with, um, with, uh, how the city is gonna go and, uh, fill in that position. The open position and be able to bring a, a team member on that will work with what we've been building all along these years. Um, it's, uh, it's, uh, a, a great opportunity for everyone. I mean, right from the time that I joined the council, I, uh, I also had that, uh, that experience. Um, going from, uh, um, joining the, the planning commission and helping out what's going on. And that truly kind of gave me a little bit of, um, a, a background, a, a foothold to kind of, um, understand what is being done. And I believe it kind of also gave me a, a, a hit the ground running type of, uh, experience, if you will. Uh, when I joined the council and it kind of really gave me that, um, that, uh, that, uh, foundation. So I, 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 I think I, um, I appreciate all the, 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 um, the interest of everyone. Uh, I, I could have to, um, stepping up because it's not easy to just come forward and say you wanna serve. It's, um, and I'll be wanting to be part of that decision making for the, for the city. It's a great team, it's a great opportunity. So really applaud all the candidates and everyone that, um, put in their, 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 their interest. But again, I'll, I think I'll go with, uh, with, um, with the group, with the rest of the, the councillors to say. Uh, let's give the opportunity to someone that would be not, uh, um, um, in a situation where they have to do a lot of learning. Or to have, to have a kind of understanding, to have a kind of background as to what they're getting into.
Okay. Well, now let me ask this question then. Here we are with the ti- top two candidates and, uh, so the question would be. If Shawna, uh, is our choice, I'm looking to Kate. Kate, do you have any interest in being on the planning commission?
Absolutely.
Okay, so here we are. Uh, I think this becomes a little clearer to me. If we think, and, and I, I like the idea that this is, there's a progression. Uh, you know, there's a, a strategy for moving people, you know, gaining some experience on the planning commission. You're involved in what's going on and everything that we're doing right now, especially with the expansion and everything. The planning commission is, is a hotbed of information and experience that can be gained. There's absolutely no doubt about that. Uh, so I would say that based on what I'm hearing. And we would need a motion of some sort based on how, and I've been swayed to believe. That experience up from the planning commission is an important thing to do. And I will support the council on this concept. So, uh, your thoughts on moving forward with this? Mike, how do we take it from here?
Mr. Mayor, I think what you need to do is, uh, call for motion. And, uh, then we can, we can move second. If there's any further discussion, we can move forward on that. If the councillors have any questions for the applicants, I would recommend they do that in the mo- after the motion's been made.
Okay.
So we get the, the motion in the second in hand, and then, uh, we do any discussion at that point in time. And then if we change our minds, then we can withdraw the motion, make a new motion and move through.
Okay.
Mayor, I have a motion.
Okay.
So I would move to appoint Shawna Thompson. To the open seat on the city council. And as long as, uh, Ms. Kate Moore is acceptable or accepting. I would move that Ms. Moore is appointed to the open seat on the planning commission. That would be opened up by Shawna Thompson moving to city council. Can we do it that way, Mike, or do I have to do two separate motions?
Uh, give me one second because there might be some details on that where we have to go through an application process for the planning commission.
Okay.
So I think what we would need to do, I don't think we can build a planning commission without.
Oh, notice, okay, let me withdraw that motion and I will simply move to appoint Shawna Thompson. To the open seat position on city council. And then we can deal with the rest of that in a minute. Second.
Okay, all in favor? We need a show of hands.
Uh, councillor Vayner, councillor Fender, councillor Platt, councillor Cholley, councillor Paulson and mayor Gibson in favor of appointing. Uh, councillor Thompson to her new seat.
Okay.
Congrats Shawna.
Congratulations.
Kate, I hope you will go on the planning commission. We need really competent people as the land use process is starting.
So if what I'm hearing, congratulations Shawna, this is outstanding.
Congratulations.
Kate and Heather, thank you, thank you, thank you for being involved in this process now. Uh, so we'll move right to the next question. So Mike, you believe that we're gonna have to, uh, post an opening now for the planning commission opening. Uh, with the hopes that, uh, uh, for sure Kate will apply. And, uh, and this is open to Heather as well and also Mark.
And I, we had, we had at one point talked about creating some alternate seats as well. So can we, can we kind of do this all at once so we can encourage kind of maybe all of that, you know?
I think we have, uh, it's like one or two alternate seats.
Okay.
To fit, like fill-in seats or alternate seats if, uh, that the council had called for at that meeting. What was that, five, six months ago? Um, so yes, I do believe that we have primary seats and we do have a couple of alternate seats.
And, and for, for people who are interested, an alternate can participate in any discussion, um. That goes on in the planning commission, they just can't vote.
Right.
Unless the planning commissioner is absent.
Right.
Okay.
But I mean, I think it's a good, I think, you know, I think it's a good process to have kind of a pipeline. You know, kind of going or, eh, you know, I mean, we, we don't need to rehash it. We talked about it last, that several months ago.
Now, and, and this is good, this is a good conversation, but see, this is what happens when you have great candidates. You want them in the process, you want them part of what's going on. And this is an opportunity to do just that, to create that pipeline, like you said.
In one correction, uh, Mark is already on the planning commission, sorry, sorry, Mark. I did know that.
He's on the budget.
I had, I had a, I had a brain feed.
No, no, I think Mark is on budget.
Mark Marcasey's on budget committee. Mark Manelis is on our planning commission.
Yeah, sorry, Mark.
Okay, alright, so, uh, with that being said, do we have any kind of timeline? How long will it take, uh, to post? Uh, what's the process? Let's just talk about the process for posting the planning commission opening. So that these candidates know what that process.
Mr. Smith, take it away.
So for ours, we have to do a thirty day notice. Um, and then we go ahead and accept the applications. It's a pretty simple process. It is a little bit longer than we want.
How long is, um, how long do planning commissioners serve? What is the term?
Four-year term, or two-year term, sorry.
Okay, um, so I do want to say I worry about, um. I'm planning to run for a council seat in November. And I do worry about general continuity. Um, let's say, for example, I ran for a planning commission seat, then I got that, and then I served on that for a few months, and then I had to leave that. And, you know, there's just that, that kind of rolling thing, um. So I don't know if the, um, I don't, I don't know if the city council's in a position to. I don't know, uh, wait until the election, it's not that far away. Just so that we don't end up having a bunch of people coming and going and, and that's a lot to manage with, with a lot of people in and out. Um, and then, of course, if I run for a seat and I'm not elected and, and I would, was appointed or, or selected for the committee, then it would be. But, um, just generally speaking, I wonder about the timing of the planning commission opening, which obviously is. It is what it is, right? It's, it's also a strange time to have a councillor opening, so.
Right, no, I agree. So to your point, you know, it's gonna really kind of play out that way either way. I mean, it's a short-term assignment, uh, for, uh, Shawna coming on to the council. It'd be a short-term, uh, you know, uh, duration for, uh, anyone who comes on the, uh, planning commission. But we understand, you know, I don't think it'd be that disruptive, uh, if we have to go out. And, uh, fill a planning commission seat if, uh, you're successful in November. So, uh, for a council position, I, I think it'd be okay, uh, with that process. So I'm not that concerned about, uh, the fluctuations that we'd see under that system, so.
Okay, good, good.
Yeah.
I would echo the mayor's comments on this, Kate. Plus, with everything going on with the transportation system plan, the accessory dwelling units. The House Bill two thousand and one, two thousand and three, master plan, we're gonna be hitting all that stuff over the next few months. Uh, and if you're on the planning commission for that, even that short amount of time, you're gonna get swamped with this stuff. You're gonna know exactly where we're at, and if you are elected, then you'll be already up to speed.
That, that's, that's a good point.
Heather's what, Heather's raising her hand.
Heather, same thing for you. I mean, I mean, honestly, we're not leaving you out of this conversation.
Oh, um, I was just thinking, if, um, if Kate puts in for the planning commission, would I be able to put in for the alternate position? That way, if she runs and gets it, I could still go to the meetings and then it would, I guess, make my application look better. For the, when her position opens up, if she chooses to move up to council. That way I could get experience and that way I could go to the same meetings and that way we could kind of keep a little continuity. And we're gonna be Facebook friends after this, so.
So, see, that's the spirit that we need, that's the spirit. I said, let's join in, let's try to do this thing, absorb as much as you possibly can and participate as much as you can. In this process, I think is wonderful.
Go ahead, Kate.
So I don't know if any of you know this, Shawna, I don't know if you outed us, but Shawna and I are friends. And, um, yeah. So we, we didn't actually know that the other had put in an application for an appointment until Ronnie sent the email. With the agenda on it, and I was like, oh my gosh, and I texted Shawna and I said, Shawna, it looks like we're up, up against each other here.
That's funny.
Yep, so we're pretty, uh, pretty happy. And after we Facebook stalked Heather, we agreed that in, either of the three of us would be awesome on the council.
All right, listen, I am excited about the three of you and I want participation from you as much as we can get, okay? And I'm encouraging you once again, uh, to be prepared, uh, to run in November. I mean, there's an opportunity and, you know, then that way the, uh, citizens of King City get an opportunity. Uh, to make a decision. We have two incumbents, uh, Smart and Gretchen will also be running in November. And, you know, it's, it's, it's the process, is the process, is the process. So, you know, we're just thankful that we have the interest, so.
That was Dave, I just muted him.
Okay, so.
Now, where does Heather live?
Heather is, uh, over off of, uh, Hundred Thirty First.
Heather, can you chime in there?
Heather.
Frozen.
I think Heather is frozen.
She froze, oh no.
Uh, you, you have her application there in front of your mind?
I do, yep, uh, give me one second.
Let's all go to her house.
Yes, if I remember, Heather was in.
She's on a Hundred and Thirty Third Terrace.
Yeah, that's, I don't think that's considered Edgewater, though, is it?
Yeah.
I think so.
No, it's not, it is.
Is it Roseberry?
No, it's, uh.
It's another one of those communities.
Ernie makes a good point, we shouldn't, uh.
Yeah, I, I don't want her outed too much.
Oh, yeah. Oh, right, yeah.
Sorry, Heather.
Okay, so, um, congratulations to everyone involved. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Congratulations Shawna. And we look forward, uh, to the application process for the, uh, planning commission. And looking forward to what happens in November as well.
And hopefully they will continue to participate in meetings, so that they'll see what's going on.
Well, you know, let me tell you this, I don't know how much longer we're gonna be, uh, doing Zoom meetings. But it surely makes it a lot, a lot easier to participate, uh, as a team, uh, you know. I'm kind of liking it, you know, uh, so we have this, this, this is the irony. We have a brand new wonderful city hall and we, you know, love the finished product. And we're not using it right now, but we'll get back to it eventually, but right now, this is working for us. And we'll make this work for us as long as we have to, because the safety of this team is most, most important, okay? And we'll make this work for us as long as we have to, because the safety of this team is most important, okay? Okay. Uh, so, uh, Shawna, you'll be getting information now on when the next, uh, city council meeting is going to be. And you'll have an official swearing in.
Yay.
Yay.
All right.
Hopefully we can be in, in person now.
Well, maybe we'll see.
You're gonna have a zooming in.
That's right.
So we have one more thing on the, uh, agenda, uh, that's eight point six and that's the union agreement that Mike is gonna talk to.
That's correct. So, um, if you recall from our executive session a while back, you guys gave me a series of. Items that we could work with to negotiate. We bumped up against a few of them, but, uh, and we got a little constrained budget wise. So we weren't able to kind of get as far as we had wanted to from a fiscal point of view. Um, we had to kind of, uh. Pull things back a little bit to get it in line with the budget, to make sure that we had a balanced budget and make sure we didn't lose any positions. Um, but I think we're pretty happy with what we were able to pull together. Um, the one element that the council had discussed, uh, if it was possible, was the educational. Uh, two per, or the two point five percent per degree or beyond advanced certificate. And, uh, when we put that in the budget, we weren't able to accommodate that. So we did have to back that off. Um, one of the things that we did though is in terms of longevity. Uh, for some of our folks who have been here over ten years, we did add, uh, forty additional vacation hours. Equates to about, um, one thousand to fifteen hundred dollars. Equate in salary per year, uh, for those individuals that have put in more than ten, uh, years of, uh, time with our organization. Uh, this would be an annual renewal of that leave and we're calling it longevity leave. And you'll see it, uh, defined in the definition section on page four of the union agreement. And you'll see it captured in section seventeen of the union agreement. Um, other than that, uh, most of the benefits are staying. Relatively the same, zero to no impact on most of the benefits. Um, we did change some blanket language. We adjusted the salary matrix. Um, officers will receive what equates to, uh, about a ten percent raise in this year. So it, either calendar or fiscal, wherever you drop the, the time, they'll end up receiving about ten percent. Um, for our city recorder and GIS, uh, member, Mr. Smith, who's actually on this. Zoom call, um, he's getting what equates to about a fifteen percent raise this year. Uh, the reasons that we justify these is we looked at our brother and sister cities around the metro region. And around the state and found that we had a couple of positions that were glaringly, uh, behind the eight ball. And so in order to, um, appease those positions and kind of. Try to bring these salaries up to a more competitive scale, uh, these were the, uh, salary increases that we were proposing. So, uh, with that, I will go ahead and close comment. I don't really have much more that was added beyond that. We did add a sergeant's, um, we modified the sergeant's position, which is not filled and doesn't really have a budget impact. Right now, but will have a budget impact in the future, should we want to fill that position. You're muted, Ken. Mayor Gibson, you're muted. There you go.
Yeah, con- contract negotiations are always somewhat emotional. Uh, you know, cause we're talking about, uh, money and money is usually an emotional conversation for most people. And, uh, people want to feel like they're being treated fairly, uh, that they're getting, uh, compensated. In a way that is, uh, in line with what they're being asked to do. And one of the things that I think the staff understands is that we will always take the position. To do the max that we can do, uh, to let them know that they are, uh, valued. And that we want them to stay. And there'll always be limits for a small city to be able to do that. But I think we still do a pretty good job of it. And I, I think that's what Mike is always, uh, the way he's approached this and ways communicated that. To the rest of the team, uh, along with Ernie, uh, to be able to say, look, we want you guys to be here. We value you and we will do the max that we can do, uh, for you to enjoy being here. Uh, to, you know, really align itself with this wonderful work environment that's been created. Uh, so, uh, that goes a long way and I commend you, Mike and Ernie. Uh, for, uh, the way you communicate with the team, with the staff. And to express these very important points, uh, to them, uh, through these emotional negotiations. So I, I think we're in good shape, you know? No, you never get everything that you want out of any contract negotiation. But I think everybody can walk away and feel like they've been treated fairly. And, uh, I think it meant a lot, uh, for people to understand that when we have a little extra money. At the way we gave bonuses over the last two years, uh, really helped them understand that we're trying to do the best we can. Uh, to make this a wonderful work experience. So, thank you, Mike, and thank you, Ernie, uh, for working your way through this. Uh, and also Ronnie, cause I know Ronnie, Ronnie is a shop steward, isn't he?
Yes.
Yes. Be tough on you guys, you know, and I understand that. Way to go, Ronnie. I clearly understand. So, thank you. I think we're in good shape. So do we have any other conversation or comments about, uh, this process?
Not from me. I just would like, uh, you know, the council already kind of authorized us to move forward, but just to make it official. I think it's important that the council, um, votes in favor of the union agreement. That way it can be ratified accordingly. And, uh, we can put a date on it.
Do you want to make a motion?
I, I move to, uh, approve the, uh, union contract. And, uh, authorize the city manager to sign for the city.
I'll fight you for it.
Okay, who got it?
With the child, the child voice behind you. Adorable.
Okay. All right. So show of hands. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Long with a short.
Counselor Thompson, are you gonna vote on this one?
Am, am I allowed to before I'm officially appointed?
You were, uh, voted in.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if you're sworn in, but you are voted in.
Oh, she had been sworn in, but we'll, we'll take a vote.
All right, I have, uh, did I get all six, seven?
Yeah.
Who am I missing?
Yeah.
Who am I, oh.
Raise your hand, Dave.
Counselor O'Trulli, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you and my hand is up too.
Okay, Roger that. So that's seven, so that's two elements.
And Shawna, you did an outstanding job on your first official duty.
Thank you.
Okay. So, uh, that's it for the, uh, items, uh, that we had to go through for new business. Uh, so we have our report outs now. I know that Gretchen says she had, uh, a little extra stuff that she wanted to report on. I have a long list of stuff that I wanted to talk about as well, uh, but we have, uh, pretty well on time. Uh, we've been at it for an hour, so, uh, we can certainly spend, uh, the necessary time to, uh, get the report outs done. Uh, so Ernie, you wanna go first? Ernie?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, real quick. So, uh, with the National Police Week last week, just want to say thank you to. KCCF, uh, what they did for the officers is always, uh, wonderful and it was great to see. Um, everything that was brought in for the officers, uh, and for the citizens who drop stuff off at the office also. And it's just been, uh, it's a wonderful thing. It's a great community and, uh, we totally appreciate how we're treated. It's just, it's, it, it's heartwarming to see that. Um, and I, I sent some messages off, but I'll just say them out loud to. Congratulations to Sheriff Garrett in Washington County for their levy and for sheriff winning his, uh, elections. Uh, congratulations to Heather and her police department and Chief McAlpine for their levy that, uh, was, you know. I always heard worst case stuff and so it passed and I think that's awesome. So it's, uh, congratulations to them. Uh, as far as all volume, I know people always ask, are, are volumes still pretty low? And so everything's been pretty good. We're still good on, uh, PPEs here with the city. Um, and along with the PPEs, I do wanna, I always, I. Always don't know if it's her real name or not, so I, I don't ever say the name, but there's a, a woman who makes masks in King City and, and gives them away. And it takes like donations. And, um, it's just phenomenal. And I know a bunch of masks have been dropped off at our office also. And, uh, I just, um, yeah, just really cool to see. And so I think it's just something that deserves a shout out. Hopefully that she hears about it. Um, I think she and her daughter do some stuff, so. A great thing. And that is about it for me.
Okay. Thank you, Ernie, and congratulations on, uh, all, you guys deserved all that you got for Police Week. And, you know, just a great team, well, uh, loved and well deserved. So you guys, uh, deserve everything you get. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor. Mike and I have one last thing that we need to add on to the agenda real quick.
Okay.
I'm gonna share or share the screen real quick so you guys can see it.
Proclamation.
Dear Kenneth Gibson. National Alliance of Mental Illness.
Mental health awareness.
This is gonna be, this is gonna be a, uh, proclamation.
Okay.
Uh, for mental, uh, mental health.
Month.
Health month.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, anyway, you guys go ahead and read it real quick. I know it was a late ad.
Hey, Ronnie?
Yes.
Why don't you, uh, freeze it and I will read it, okay?
Okay, that sounds great.
Sounds good.
I just have to clear off the. All right, is everyone ready?
Yeah.
Okay, Ronnie, as I read on down, uh, I'm free to scroll down when I get to the end of the page, okay?
Yep.
All right. May twenty twenty, Mental Health Month proclamation. Whereas mental health is part of everyone's overall health and wellbeing and mental illnesses are prevent, prevalent. In our county, state and nation, with one in five adults experiencing a mental health issue every year. And whereas COVID nineteen pandemic has increased the number of people experiencing feelings of exam, anxiety and depression. Whereas stigma and the resulting discrimination is a primary obstacle to early identification and efficient, effective. God, I'm having some trouble. Treatment of individuals with mental illness and their abilities to recover, to lead full productive lives. And whereas approximately half of chronic mental illness begins at the age of fourteen. And suicide is the second leading cause of death of people ages ten to twenty-four. And whereas suicide is the tenth leading cause of death in the United States and the second leading cause among young adults. And ninety percent of people who die by suicide had shown symptoms of mental health condition. According to interviews with family, friends and medical professionals. And. Whereas early identification and treatment can make a difference in the successful navigation of mental illness and recovery. And whereas we come together with every citizen and community to help end the silence and stigma that for too long. Has made people feel isolated, alone and discouraging, discouraged people from getting help. And whereas through public education and working together to raise awareness. We can help improve the lives of individuals and families affected by mental illness. Now therefore, I, Mayor Gibson, that's your part. A municipal corporation in Washington County, state of Oregon, do hereby proclaim May twenty twenty. As Mental Health Awareness Month in King City. Shine a light on mental illness, illness and the need for long-term improvements in our mental healthcare system. And increased access to care for all, so no one feels alone.
Okay, very well done. Okay. Good. That's a good thing. It's a great thing. It's a necessary thing. Okay. We need, uh, to, uh, motioner, uh, second. We're just.
Just as long as you second that, Mayor, we're good to go.
I'm, I second it. I'm good to go. Okay. All right. So thank you. And so Mike, uh, it's your turn, uh, for your report out, if you have anything.
It's been a week. Um, it's been a rough couple of weeks, actually, uh, with everything going on. Uh, the governor's executive orders to begin the phased reopening. The transportation system plan notching up and getting moving, the master plan RFP evaluations. Um, we reviewed, uh, the three proposals, uh, from Ferganese and Associates. Three J Consulting and their subs as well as OTAC over the last, uh, two weeks. Uh, we have a meeting on Friday with the evaluation team to review scores. Um, and we plan to present our selection to the council at our next meeting in June. And, uh, hopefully award a, uh, contract to one of them. Um, with that being said, it's been a lot of, uh. I, isolated reading and evaluating some of these, uh. Uh, proposals over the last week or so. And, uh, in addition, we're getting ready to kick off the tack for the, um, transportation system plan. And there's been a lot of information flying out of the transportation system plan as well. As we're getting a lot of the background documents and everything else. So it has been a busy couple of weeks. Um, I'm happy to actually be over that hump, hopefully. Um, but it sounds like with the release coming on Friday from Washington County, it's gonna turn into blitzkrieg again here shortly. Um, and trying to adapt to the reopening. And as you can see, we, we already had an incident at the park yesterday where, uh, a baseball team got a little ahead of themselves. Before Washington County was open. Um, we had a discussion, uh, with them over the phone and they apologized and broke it up. Um, I think they were under the impression that Oregon was open. Uh, most of Oregon is, we're not.
We're not.
What?
So, um. County is not.
Yeah, and so what I explained to them is in Washington County, we're still shut down. Um, but I've heard people are just going down to Newburgh and practicing as teams and stuff. And, and this is the part that I need some clarity on. I still can't get any clarity on. As I read phase one, it doesn't permit youth activities. Um, but these baseball and softball organizations are going out and doing youth activities. Because the gathering says less than twenty-five people and they're saying, well, we're less than twenty-five people.
Right.
So, you know, from a management standpoint, managing a city, the last thing I want to do is put us in jeopardy. Of getting some sort of, uh, hostifying or something like that, or having our park shut down or our residents suffer. So, um, you know, maybe on our next call with the governor, mayor, we need to ask for some clarity on when youth activities are actually allowed. It, it seems to me like outdoor recreation is allowed.
Right.
In phase one, but are you allowed to do team practices? Are you? I don't, I don't know these elements. And it seemed, when I read the governor's rules, um, youth camps. Uh, youth, uh, things of that nature were in phase two.
Yeah, summer camps, yeah.
So, I mean, maybe I'm wrong.
Well.
They can just, uh, do their practices and games and stuff in phase nine.
It, it's still not clear, Mike, but I think because the proposal from Washington County is going forward on Friday. I think we're gonna have a clearer picture. Uh, we will meet as mayors with, uh. I think we're gonna have a clearer picture. We will meet as mayors with Catherine Harrington on Monday. And I hope in that conversation, we will clearly understand what our dos and don'ts. I stressed to the mayors today that we need to be on the same page, especially in the neighboring cities Tiger. To Walat and Sherwood, King City and Durham. Because, you know, there's this overlapping that will occur, where people will move from one part to the next. If we don't have the same guidelines and rules, we can have a real serious issue. So I I think we might have another meeting. It's either gonna happen tomorrow or it's gonna happen on Friday. But one city and it's Sherwood, the mayor of Sherwood. Wants to push to reopen on the twenty second, which is the same day. That Washington County is moving forward with the. Request to the governor and we're saying that's not a good idea. Why would you do that? When a week later or a little more than a week, June first is what we're shooting for for the reopening. Process to begin, so we have made it clear that we're not in favor. Of trying to push for any kind of reopening on the twenty second. That doesn't make any sense to me. So, but we'll get more detail. We'll see what's moved forward to the governor and we will see what kind of conversation. We have on Monday. I'll be prepared to ask those very specific questions. And so that and hopefully all the mayors, like I said, the neighboring cities will be on the same page with it too.
Yeah, I mean, it seemed like there was plenty of clarity when it came to. You know, restaurants, bars, service industries, retail.
Personal care.
Yeah, you know, plenty of guidance and clarity to those particular uses. I mean, I totally could understand. They're like, okay, you can do, if you're a masseuse, you can do a massage, but you have to change. PPE between customers, you know?
Yeah.
But there was just a lack of clarity and guidance when it came to youth recreation, which is of course. We have three different organizations that use our park. All three are just, hey, can we go? Can we go? Can we go? I don't have an answer for him yet, so I would, I've been trying to get answers.
Right.
I I don't have them.
And I and I tell you what, Mike, the best thing for us to do, once we get some clarity. On what the dos and don'ts are, is to have a Zoom meeting with those organizations and say, look, this is what it is. This is what we understand and this is what we're gonna adhere to, so that there is no gray area. But we need to get those organizations at the table and say, this is what we understand to be. The real deal and this is what our expectations are gonna be within King City and the use of our park, okay? So I I think that's what we have to do. Any other thoughts on this? Okay.
Sensible.
Okay, Mike, you have anything else?
I'm good.
Okay, let's see, I'm gonna let Gretchen and I, we'll go last, Gretchen.
Yeah.
So anybody else, Jamie?
Sure, so first, just I wanted to circle back to what Ernie had said. I believe that the woman. And her that's making the masks that you're referring to is Melanie Sage Bear and her daughter. And one thing, Ernie, what we've asked and what they're interested in doing is also making masks. So that officer that so KC PD can hand them out into the community as well. And they, we just want to get an understanding of that process, so. I can take that discussion with you offline, or can they just drop off masks to City Hall? How do you want to deal with that? You want to talk about it later?
Yeah, let's talk about that later.
Okay, so I'll circle back around with you, but just to get that on there. And I do think there are several, like the masks that we included in that basket. Which, by the way, Ernie, I'm gonna need my basket back later after you, you know, take all the wares out later. I don't need it anytime soon, but. Jennifer Miller in my neighborhood made the ma- made the masks in there. There are several. There are several community members that are really doing some amazing thing that I think we should highlight at some point in the future. Like there's, there is a woman in Edgewater who every day walks around and picks up trash and has done for years. And so I I think some of, you know, at some point, we should celebrate some of these outstanding individuals that have really stepped up. So we'll circle back around to that after, you know, COVID at some point. Okay, so. The, obviously, the foundation and I have was focused on celebrating National Police Week, so we already talked about that. The next kind of thing that we're really trying to get off the ground is our. Our. COVID was business kind of response task force. We haven't figured out a pithy name for it yet, but. On the foundation's webpage, we have created a Facebook group for King City businesses. For the businesses to connect with kind of the community and try to get. Some kind of more support going. One thing that we have found that I'd like to highlight is. We're having a difficulty getting the email addresses for our business community. It's, I've talked to Ronnie about this. I guess previously, the way we are capturing business community information. So we should think at some point about that process later, but. What we really need to get this off the ground is all the email addresses, because just calling has proved. Extremely time consuming and we're not getting through anyone because phone numbers are disconnected and so forth. So Ronnie. Can you send me that email list of all the business emails for the business license, please?
Jamie, just along those lines.
Yeah.
That list and that communication is gonna become even more important. Because we're going to need to make sure that our businesses are getting the proper information on the reopening guidelines.
Absolutely.
One of the things that Ronnie just posted, or I I think we got posted. Is that there's gonna be a series of webinars that's put on by the Tiger. Chamber of Commerce. And there's gonna be a lot of discussion in there on the reopening process and all of those kinds of things. So there needs to be a real strong line of communication within the few businesses, especially the restaurants and. Businesses. That we have on what the guidelines are going to be. So when there's contact made with them, we need to make sure that we guide them in a direction that says. There's a wealth of information on the King City website. There's a link to the Tiger Chamber of Commerce. And all those kinds of things, so it really be needs to be fairly detailed. Get that process wrong.
Perfect. And kind of just to be clear, I think, you know, obviously, there's a great need out there and. And I think what. You know, what I see as far as a task force going is really just a place for. Members of our business community, be it small businesses, larger businesses, micro businesses. To engage with kind of the community to to brainstorm and discuss. Obviously, right, we we don't have funds to give out. We, you know, we want to make sure that the purpose of what we're doing is clear as well, so that. We don't give any business false hope that we have some grant or, you know, whatever, but but I think, you know, there. There's certainly things out there that. That we probably aren't thinking about, that I think getting everyone to the table to discuss is kind of first and foremost on. So we're we're hoping to kind of roll that out, you know, in the next week. So I'll continue to kind of reach out with Ronnie and kind of coordinate that.
You know, it's been a dream of mine to have a relationship with these businesses and it's been a tough, tough. Uphill battle to try to make that happen.
Absolutely.
Whatever reason, so I appreciate it.
Kate, hi.
Hi, I feel very passionately about helping with that, with the business aspect. I spent a lot of years with the Tiger Chamber. And would like to, they're actually actually called the Tiger Area Chamber of Commerce. Because it is supposed to include King City and I have fought for that for a long time. But Ken, I'd like to talk with you more about that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would welcome that. I really want to, I don't feel like I've done a good enough job to engage with them and especially now it's important.
I got you.
I, let's have a conversation about that, okay?
Okay.
Just find an email when you'll be available to have a conversation, okay?
Will do.
Perfect. And then. Kind of. Yeah, I think that's all I have right now. I have a lot of other ideas brewing, but I think I'll take those offline and follow up and. We can talk about it the next, at the next one, so.
Alright, Jamie, thank you for all that you're doing. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, Micah.
Sorry, there was a meeting, a meeting. Only real update I have is from the CBDG meeting of last week. There's not a whole lot to update, other than we went through. And had a public hearing for the twenty twenty to twenty twenty four consolidated plan, which was actually. A really good discussion, especially with regards to equity and diversity within the way that we're we're approaching the plan. Thought that was a really beneficial discussion. Aside from that, we're getting ready to do some evaluations with work systems for some of the. Groups in Washington County that are gonna be looking for funding. Aside from that, not a lot to report.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. Dave. You're muted, Dave.
There you go.
I welcome our new. Newly appointed counselor.
Dave, you may have to repeat the first half of that. We had you muted.
What was that?
I said you may have to repeat the first half of that because we had you muted.
Well, I don't think I said anything in the first half, Mike.
Nothing of real importance anyways, right?
Right.
Okay, so is that all you wanted to say was welcome to China?
Yes.
Heather has her hand up.
Yes, Heather. Oh, you're you're on mute.
Okay, great. I just want to say thank you for taking the time to listen to me and letting me listen in. My phone's about to die.
Oh, okay.
To go take a nap before work, so I just.
I clearly understand.
Just wanted to say good night and thank you and yeah, I'm very excited for all this to work out and see how it goes. So I just want to say thank you again.
And Heather, thank you and be safe out there, please. Look forward to you joining the team.
Yeah, sounds great. You guys have a good night.
Thanks for applying, Heather. You did great.
Alright, thank you, Heather. Goodbye.
Okay. Alright, Dave, you were through? Dave?
No, I'm through.
And I I forgot one thing. Can I circle back?
No. Okay.
So I wrote, I I think I said, I didn't send it to everyone, but I think I sent it to you. So I wrote a newsletter entry for the KCCA's monthly newsletter. And then I also sent a copy to Dave and asked him to circulate to the Highlands. In res- in response to that and kind of around that, in discussing with the KCCA. I think they're really looking at more ways and opportunities to connect with. With broader King City. And so there's gonna be opportunity, I think, each month to to submit a newsletter. Or, excuse me, an entry or something into that newsletter. And so I will kind of continue to keep tabs on that, but I I think it's a great resource for us to take advantage of to to reach out. To to the KCCA. So I was very encouraged that, one, they reached out to me and asked me to write an entry. And then, two, that, you know, that they had the. Kind of idea of kind of continuing the spot for members outside to contribute. So I'm passing that along. I'll keep you guys posted and. And there you go.
Just to let you know that I I needed to provide some information to the. West Side Economic Alliance for the upcoming Mayor's Forum, Jamie.
Yes, yes.
But what I did was I got creative. I took some excerpts from. The Regal Courier article that you and Scott Keith did. And I kind of made some bullet points from that. I think it was great information in there, so. I already sent that to Teresa Teresa Durnum. And I think we're gonna be okay. Most of what I talked about, they just wanted some bullet points. What we're doing in King City during this virus. And I I really highlighted some of the things that the foundation is doing. Along with what the staff and the police department are doing during this process, so. It worked out fine.
Perfect. I apologize, Ken. It was my husband's birthday and then I forgot. I totally forgot. I apologize.
All these things, I'm, that's, I'm, that's not a day. But it it worked out fine, but I forward that to him, Mike.
Jamie, can you keep me in the loop on that since I'm the liaison?
Oh, sure, yeah. Sorry, sorry, Gretchen. I didn't even think about that. I apologize.
Okay.
Alright.
That sounds good. So Smart, do you have anything?
No, I did not have anything tonight. Thank you.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Alright, Gretchen, you.
Okay, well, I have a couple of little brief announcements. One, hot off the press, McCann's is moving. They're going to be moving later this summer to the the bank building across the street from the gas station. It'll provide them with a lot more space.
What's the name of the bank that left?
Columbia Bank Left.
So they're moving to that building, huh?
Yes.
So McCann's is moving into that building?
Yes.
Pharmacy, just a pharmacy.
Oh, just the pharmacy.
Okay, pharmacy, okay.
Yes, but they will be able to start doing compounding and.
Interesting.
A lot of other services that they are unable to do in their current space.
Oh, that's that's great news. Yeah, thank you.
What's gonna stay where McCann's is right now? Will it stay the store and the?
The home health and the pharmacy will go up there. The rest of the store will stay.
Along with the.
Great.
Office and all of that.
Yeah, we'll get more shopping things.
Yes.
I think the post office there is closing. Is that what I heard?
The postmaster, she passed away.
Who did?
Um, the postmaster. Nancy, yeah, she passed away.
When?
I think, yeah, a week ago. Yeah, they, they, yeah, very sad.
I didn't hear that. Okay. Alright, that's sad. Okay, Gretchen, continue.
Okay, I have some good news from ODOT. As most of you know, I'm serving on the Transportation Policy Committee for the League.
Of Oregon Cities, yes.
League of Oregon Cities. We had a presentation on. Excuse me, Monday. And received the new policy decision regarding. Speed zones in cities. And as you probably remember, the current policy had been. Whatever eighty-five percent of the traffic would be determined on speed. For suburban and commercial and residential, which is what King City is. For arterials, they will have a thirty to thirty-five. For medium-high collectors, twenty-five to thirty-five, and local streets, twenty-five to thirty-five. With a fifty percent. Level for doing determinations. So it's gonna make life a lot easier for those of us who want to have more control. The local control bill. Is a priority of the committee. We voted on Monday at the end of our committee session. It's on the list that will be coming from the board and down in July. For all the cities to vote on.
Okay, so just as an example, what does this mean to us in terms of Fisher Road and one hundred and thirty-first?
Well, I'm thinking it will allow us to control, because everything we were hearing is they were gonna raise them. That raise it to thirty-five. It would allow us to have it at, down at thirty. Which would be good.
I don't want to, I don't ever want to see thirty on one hundred and thirty-first.
That's an arterial. It'll go to, didn't you just say arterio- arterials are thirty to thirty-five?
Yes.
Why would we want to do that, though? I mean, would we, are you saying we won't have a choice?
They are giving us more choice than we had.
But is that twenty-five now? But if that choice says it starts?
Well, it never should have been twenty-five.
This is true.
It should have been thirty-five.
Right.
So I, let me make sure I'm clear on this. That means that based on this information, that we really should have a thirty mile an hour speed limit on one hundred and thirty-first?
Yes, and on Fisher.
I don't like it. What, what can I do? I'm not doing it.
Well, the question I would have would be in the evaluation procedures. I just lost my light.
Okay.
But we're no longer going to have the eighty-five percent, um, rule. It'll be a fifty percent rule.
Okay, so let me, uh, maybe I'm overreacting. Maybe I'm overreacting. I want to hear from Ernie on what his thoughts are on this chain.
Ernie, are you there?
Yeah, he's there. I'm looking at him. You can't hide, Ernie.
Is there, is there a question?
Say, before you say what you're going to say, does it matter that it's a school zone?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's different. A school zone.
Okay, well, that's what one hundred and thirty-first is.
No, the school zone would stay twenty for sure.
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right, now I feel better already.
It would just be the area after you get out of the school zone.
Yes.
If.
It, it'd look a lot like Durham, Durham's thirty-five, and then you, you enter the school zone and, and it, uh, you know, you've slowed down. It just brings a little more, uh, you know, awareness to the flashing lights and, you know, educational stuff that we like to talk about, part of educating the drivers. Um, you know, and then, of course, you know, it's a double edged sword. Yes, people, we, you know, realize it's an arterial and the people, well, I think it'd be quite the argument as far as, you know, the different speed zones that are wanted and those who are against it. But, uh, you know, then it, again, we get into the, you know, is it something that, uh, you know, I think Fisher Road probably, you know, I could argue both sides. Let's put it that way. It's going to call for a little, a lot more thought, uh, just because of, there are some sightline issues on Fisher Road. Um, especially when you get past one hundred and twenty-sixth, you have the curve there. I think we, we start to have a little bit of issues and, and especially you, you got to pay attention to the median age of the driver that's in that area and stuff too, so.
I'm one of them. I understand.
It's just something that, you know, that has to be, it, it needs to be thought out.
Okay, so what's the timing of all of this, Gretchen? How?
This is their new policy that they have just, it's hot off the press that, um, it's effective May first. So.
But instead of it being the eighty-fifth percentile that you have to judge your speed off, they basically have a set speed for those particular roads.
But you have the fifty percent rule.
Fifty, fiftieth percentile. So you have your, so if you have a set speed of thirty to thirty-five, you take your traffic study, you take the fiftieth percentile of whatever that speed is, that are the eighty-fifth percentile, which should basically give you a mid-range, I would imagine, right?
It's going to get to a lot lower than, than the eighty-five.
You're going to get a wider, you're going to get a wider variable that you can then base your decision on whether you're going to go with the thirty or the thirty-five. If you took the eighty-fifth percentile and the speed's at forty, then you have to go with thirty-five.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Well, you know, life is all about adjustments.
It's good news.
It's, oh, well, I don't know how good it is. It still doesn't feel good to me, but, you know, we'll see how it all plays out. And, you know, the fact that one hundred and thirty-first does have a school zone aspect, I'm okay with that. And now we're talking about, if you turn off, uh, off a deep bend on one hundred and thirty-first, you're in the school zone until you get past, uh, a little bit past the entrance to Deer Creek, and then it picks, it potentially can pick up to thirty. Okay.
Could the school zone be increased?
Well, I think the school zone goes, you know, the, the tree zone that this school property owns.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it goes past that.
But you're asking, can you extend it farther down?
That's what I'm asking, yeah.
Mike, you said no?
I, I thought he was asking if the school speed could be increased. I was like, no.
No, I, no, I just, I'm asking if the zone, could, we could actually physically push the zone down, you know, so we could slow the traffic down a little bit more.
It's X feet from the school property.
Is that, so that's an Oregon State statute then?
Yeah.
Well, what we need to do is look at the statute then and then go with whatever.
I mean, if, if we have some wiggle room on that to extend it, then we'll do it. Okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know what the X feet is.
Don't they own the, that tree line that?
That's what I was just saying. Yeah.
I think you could, I think you could push it all the way down to first, at least.
Yeah, I think we could easily.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, I think that's, I think that's, if, if we're going to talk about increases, I think that's something that, there's the compromise.
Oh, yeah, I feel good about that.
To push that zone back and that just slows them down a little bit earlier, because, I mean, that's, that's a pretty good grade, you know, coming downhill.
Oh, yeah.
And people come off that hill quickly and, and stuff, and, and y'all live there, and it's just something that, you know, I, I think that's worth the look, and I think that maybe is the compromise. And then I, also, I think we just got to look at the, the area of one hundred and twenty-sixth, you know, before we get too crazy with, uh, kind of speed and stuff, just because the sightlines are so affected.
Sounds good. Okay, thank you, guys. Okay, Gretchen?
Okay, um, just FYI, the number one vote counter for, um, support for legislation from the committee uh, was support for long-term transportation infrastructure funding, which, um, as we know, not all the projects from two thousand seventeen have gotten started, and I'll be getting back to that in just a minute. Uh, the other, as I said, the local speed zone authority and the photo camera, those were the big winners on the vote from the committee. The committee met for eleven and a half hours over the last eight weeks and, uh, did a tremendous amount of work. I have some not-so-good news, and I tried to get you the, the webinar that I, that I attended yesterday. ODOT did a presentation on their budget picture, and ODOT has two separate parts of their budget. Their project side, which is where they get their federal money, et cetera. It's all dedicated to doing projects. And then they have the operations side, which includes maintenance, um, working on certain bridge pieces. A lot of the stuff that they do day-to-day, whether it's, uh, plowing snow, filling the potholes, the, the minor, uh, construction projects. Uh, what we were told, and as I said, I have the PowerPoint mic from that webinar, and I will share the details with you. But basically, what's happening on the operations side is the revenue is going up about two percent a year, and their costs are going up six percent a year, which is not a good ratio. And they are looking at a variety of potential, uh, service changes that could affect cities. One, to cut service levels on a variety of programs that are on state highways, and that specifically could include Highway ninety-nine, which would not be cool. Uh, some cuts to funding for stiff programs, not the actual amount of funding, but because they're going to try to move some of the operational costs of doing business, the indirect costs over to the federal money side, it could reduce the pot of money that's available for stiff programs. Uh, they're looking at a major budget shortfall by two thousand twenty-five, which is not good news. And as I said, they're looking at losing money for maintenance, uh, maybe not being able to keep roads up, especially in areas that need high maintenance. Uh, they are going to look into, they've been refinancing bonds. By the way, twenty cents out of every dollar of federal money is going to service the bonds, the debt that they have already, which is really putting a pinch on, uh, the ability to do projects. I asked specifically when the bonds will pay off. With, with the refinancing that they've done, they will not pay off until twenty thirty-eight. So this is a fairly long-term problem. They are not looking at, at going to change the, the city-county, uh, fifty percent that they get out of the revenue that goes to the operational side, and they are looking at some serious changes with respect to DMV. They're probably going to be cutting a lot of services there, trying to go more to more online, uh, services and looking at raising fees.
I don't think anybody will complain about that.
So, well, but the point, the point being, they are in, their operations side is in serious trouble, and they were giving us a heads up that we need to start looking at that. Um, as I said, I have the detailed information for Mike. This was, we had an hour on Monday and another hour, uh, yesterday. So with that, I will, let's see. If it was one other thing that I wanted to say. Oh, um, the tax committee, we're still meeting. I will report next month on what's going on with the tax committee.
Okay.
So it's been a busy, very busy spring, lots of zooming and teaming and go-to-meeting and.
Well, Mike and I were talking about this. I think we're busier now than we were when we were driving all over the place to go to meetings.
Oh, as, as I said, I've, I've already been in fifteen hours of meetings for the tax committee, so.
My calendar is basically booked up almost every day, every week.
Yep.
So, uh, but I'm not complaining. I mean, because I still like the process. So Gretchen, thank you so much for your.
I just wanted to give you a heads up that it's something we're going to have to be aware of as we're budgeting, um, money for transportation projects. That money coming and shared revenue is probably going to go down.
Understood. Okay, I, I will, uh, give you my report out, but, uh, Shannon, do you have anything to report out? Like, I mean, I'm giving you official duties. Do you have anything to report out?
I don't have anything to report this time, but.
Okay, very well done. Appreciate it. Okay. All right. Uh, on Monday, I had a Zoom meeting with the Tiger Tuolton School District, and a lot of conversation going on about, uh, what, uh, they're going to be able to do. They're contemplating whether or not they will have any school, uh, for the rest of the year. Uh, there's a possibility that they will, in fact, do some, uh, form of in-class schooling. Uh, they're trying to pull that together, something along the lines of no teacher having more than ten students at a time uh, for some summer classes and those kinds of things. One of the most disturbing parts of the meeting with them was, uh, a report out that the Director of Facilities gave uh, regarding all the vandalism that's taken place at Tiger High, Tuolton High, and so on. It is disgusting. They have broken into sheds, they have fenced off areas where they don't want people to be. They've cut the chains, cut locks, damaged fences. I mean, it's just disturbing how much vandalism, uh, and the cost associated with what is going on, uh, with people just outright uh, disrespecting the school facilities because they're trying to keep people out of certain locations. They had one of their sheds at one of the schools that had, uh, their lawnmower, uh, that they use. Somebody stole a lawnmower, damaged the doors beyond repair, and, uh, it is very disturbing. One of the other things that he talked about, said they have a real serious issue with people, uh, with dogs off-leash, believe it or not. Where have you heard this before? Um, and, uh, what they said is that they have turf fields that people are disregarding the fact that they don't want them on, and they're letting their dogs run loose and not cleaning up their poop. It is just, uh, a really, really disturbing issue that they're trying to deal with. And these are people, I, you know, I think there's a population of people that like to blame this kind of stuff on, uh, teenagers and young folk. I'm not buying it. I think there are a lot of adults that are disregarding and disrespecting our communities the same way we see people in our own community parks, uh, just disregarding the signs. Uh, what really got me one day, when we put the new signs up to make sure your dogs are on leash, somebody took the poop bag and hung it on one of those signs and said, this is what I think about your rules for having my dog on leash. But that's the attitude. That's the attitude that we have in our communities, and it's not outside sources. It's the folks who live right around us who choose to disrespect our communities. So, uh, but I think, uh, this was a big step for the Tiger Tuolton School District to meet with us. Frank Bouganet, the mayor of, uh, Tuolton was on the call, Jason Snyder, uh, from Tiger, uh, Gary Schirato from Durham, and I were all on the call, and they truly appreciated us being involved. Uh, we appreciated them inviting us to be a part of it, and I think it's going to be a lasting relationship, and it's going to pay some big dividends. They also talked about, uh, their creative plans for the two thousand twenty, uh, class graduations, and, uh, they're going to do some video graduations and so on, drive-by graduations and a variety of things that they're pulling together for that. And I really thanked, uh, Dr. Sue Reich, uh, for all that she's doing and involving us in this process. Uh, and I made it clear to her, I didn't compliment her just because she now lives in King City. She appreciates, and she is so impressed with living in the Highlands, uh, and getting a chance to, uh, participate in the Highlands activity. And she made a comment on the newsletters that are coming through, a lot of good information coming, uh, through the Highlands. So she was very impressed with that. So, uh, that's it for the Tuolton School District. Uh, you all know by now that, uh, Measure twenty-six to ten, the Metro Homeless, uh, measure did pass. And, uh, I was a little bit, uh, concerned whether or not it would, but it passed with, uh, flying colors. Uh, and of course, that means that, uh, the only folks who pay into that to support the homeless, uh, crisis are those individuals who make up more than a hundred and twenty-five thousand a year and couples who make more than two fifty. So, uh, I would be willing to contribute, but I don't make that kind of money, so I'm not going to be contributing to it. So, uh, but that was, uh, a, a great thing. Uh, the other thing that I think was important, um, we, uh, know that our representative for the, uh, Metro seat, uh, replacing Craig Dirksen is now going to end up in a runoff between Tom Anderson and, uh, Garrett Rosenbaum. Uh, so there's going to be a runoff there in November. Um, Ronnie and I learned something, uh, today, and I, I, I kept wondering what happened to Rich Vile. I know that Rich Vile was supposed to be running, uh, for, uh, Secretary of State, but then I, it dawned on me that he changed from Republican to independent. So therefore, they do not participate in the May, uh, primary. Uh, so he will be, uh, one of the challengers for that position in November. So it'll be Rich Vile, Haas, and, um,
Thatcher.
Thatcher, uh, running for, uh, uh, Secretary of State. Uh, just real quickly, uh, we've already talked a little bit about the reopening. I really want to make sure that, uh, we have enough information, that there's a, an open line of communication with our businesses. Uh, once we get the green light to start opening restaurants, I want to make sure that they are following the rules and regulations And that, uh, they know that we are here to support them any way we can, uh, and, uh, so we'll see what happens with that. Um, so we'll try to establish more communication with those businesses on that, Jamie, uh, we'll talk about it and also with, uh, Kate. Uh, to see if we can, uh, ramp up the communication with them. I, that word that the, uh, uh, King City Golf Course is reopening. And, uh, with some guidelines that they're gonna do, normally at a golf course, you try to do tee times every nine minutes. They're gonna do every ten minutes and twosomes only, there won't be any foursomes that they're gonna let out. So they're gonna follow some precautions to, uh, keep people safe on the golf course, and I was happy to hear that. And I don't know how many of you guys have been in, uh, our city hall lately, but I was there today to sign checks. And I was very impressed with the, uh, plexiglass shields that have been installed at the front counter. And I, I would imagine that, uh, Dave, uh, Runyon installed it, it's fantastic, it's great. And it's gonna, uh, add a lot more protection, uh, for the staff, uh, during passports as we reopen, got ahead of that. Uh, it looks great, it's gonna be great, uh, they've rearranged the furniture in the lobby, and they've also ordered pockets. That will go on the floor, uh, to, uh, maintain the personal distancing when people are in there. Now, Mike, you guys have kind of talked about how many people you'll allow in at any one time, you wanna talk about that a little bit, what you guys are thinking?
Sure, for, uh, courts, I think we're looking at, uh, we could allow six to eight people in to the building at a time. And then just keep them spread out, uh, it would essentially be four on each side of the chamber. And what we do probably is line them up outside or have them wait in their car and have them come in as they're called. And then, uh, once they're done, they would exit the building, and then we'd bring in a new group. Um, in order to do passports, what we would do is bring in one group at a time, or one family at a time. Or one customer at a time to do passports, so that way we don't get, uh. In large groups, cause usually people come in with their children and you get, you know, five people. In the lobby at any given moment, and then if you have two groups that are trying to get passports, I think some of you have been in. To City Hall on a Friday or, you know, Friday afternoon at like, one or two, and everyone's trying to get their passport before the weekend and. Uh, we get lines out the door and we're trying to basically avoid that overwhelming, um. You know, consolidation of people in the lobby, so, uh, we're essentially, we have nice weather, so we can ask them to wait outside. Uh, or under the awning or covers until, or in their personal vehicles until their turn is called.
Okay, alright, that sounds good, uh, so thanks, Mike, but just, I wanna circle back to the election. I was encouraged actually by all of those measures that passed that were, uh, uh, either. Uh, going to be, uh, a tax increase for residents, when you look at, uh, the city of Portland, they renewed their gas tax. You know, uh, to maintain their roads, uh, you had the, uh, 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 library levy for Washington County. The pu- uh, sheriff's, uh, police levy for Washington County, you had the. The, uh, one for Tiger, and Tiger got creative and they kind of, uh, retool that and called it, what is it, Neighborhood Policing? Uh, levy, as opposed to something that they tried before that passed, uh, well. So I'm encouraged that people are in fact willing to pay for these services that are important to us. And that encourages me to really look hard next year at another run out of gas tax for us. You know, those are the kinds of things that if we package it right, if we sell it right, if we market it correctly. I think it can get done, so I think we really need to, uh, look forward to the possibility of doing that. And, uh, final two things, uh, we are planning on doing a state-of-the-city address. Uh, a virtual state-of-the-city address, uh, the plan is for, uh, me to, uh, work with. Uh, Tuolton Valley, uh, cable TV, uh, to put, put together a presentation on the state of the city. Uh, with no, uh, uh, fanfare other than that. And we could probably do that in conjunction with the next, uh, city council meeting, is that what we were thinking, Mike?
Yeah, so basically, because we have to do this virtually, we'd avoid the dog and pony show.
Right.
Just kind of, uh, keep it more of an intimate message, given our current situation. Uh, relating to the community via TVCTV. That, like, this is our situation, this is what we're faced with in this day and age, and here's our plan to get out of here. Or, uh, at least to get back to some semblance of normality.
Okay, so we'll be working on that, you know, with all these other things, like Mike said, we're trying to finish that review of the, uh, folks who. Are bidding on the master plan work, uh, we should have that pretty much under control, uh, by the end of the week. And then I need to immediately start working on the, uh, state-of-the-city address. And then, for your information, if you guys wanna be, uh, involved in the, uh, Westside Economic Alliance, uh, Mayor's. Uh, forum, that's gonna take place on, uh, the twenty-eighth at seven thirty a.m. And, uh, most of the mayors in the region will be participating in that.
Here, will you, will you circulate? I'd be interested in that, can, can I get, is it a Zoom?
Uh, yes, it is, and I have an email that I can forward to.
I, I would like to as well.
Okay.
I had a couple of questions regarding TTSD when, when you're done, though.
Uh, actually, I am done.
Okay, uh, so first thing, is there any way that we can highlight and celebrate our graduating seniors within King City? Uh, is, is there any way that we could get that information from TDSD, do you guys think? I mean, I don't know how to access that information without.
I think.
Crowding it or?
Uh, I think, yes, I, I think, uh, I think her name is Tracy Rose. There's the, uh, community, um, outreach person.
Okay.
And I will forward you, I just got an email from her, uh, today, thanking all the mayors for participating in that call on Monday. So I think she is the person that probably would be the best person to have a conversation with, okay?
I thi- I think it would be nice if we could organize either, you know, a, a no-contact parade through the city. Or we do some type of, you know, uh, uh. Something to highlight the graduating senior, I mean, what a terrible time for them.
It is something that every high school student looks forward to.
Yeah, absolutely, so, uh, if you forward me, I, I'm happy to kind of take the lead on looking at what, you know, what we can do. Um, and then, at some point, uh, Mayor, it would be great if we could coordinate with Dr. Sue. On getting the, um, the Deer Creek materials to reflect that they are in. King City and not in Tigerd, all of their official everything refers to them as Tigerd. And so, I, I just, for the council, I just want everyone to know that in the back of your mind, that at every opportunity you have. We can try to continue to encourage Deer Creek to come into the fold officially of their paperwork. Uh, but in all seriousness, they, they are doing a phenomenal job as a parent of a, of a Deer Creek kid, um. I really applaud everything that they're doing, so, uh, but it would be nice that their materials reflect that they're in King City.
Well, I can tell you that they are so juiced over what, uh, we did as a city on one hundred and thirty-first.
Yeah.
They truly, I mean, they truly appreciate. That whole effort, and, uh, I think there's a willingness now, uh, to establish a better level of ownership. For Deer Creek and King City, so, I think the timing is right.
Yeah, I think so too, I think it's good.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, wow, there was a whole lot of conversation, a lot of good stuff. Um, and I know this is always the more difficult part of the meeting when we need a motion to adjourn, cause nobody really wants to go.
I, I moved that we adjourned the meeting and, uh, you were so exciting, you put both of my little, little girls to sleep.
I'm that boring, huh? Okay, well, thank you for that compliment, Gretchen, I appreciate it very much. So.
I'll second.
So, uh, Mike, you need to raise a hand, uh, everybody agree?
Everybody in, alright, I think that's a majority right there, so.
I think so, I think it is. Guys, stay safe and continue to take good care of yourselves and your family and, uh, we'll communicate. Uh, an email, uh, please, that will, uh, let me know when we can talk about the businesses. And I'll send you an email, Jamie, regarding, uh, the, uh, contact at, uh, Tuolton, uh, Tiger Tuolton School District.
And, Mike, will you get ahold of me regarding all this information?
Yeah, the ODOT stuff?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, um, and you sent me an email, but I couldn't get that YouTube link, it was expired or something.
I guess it was exp- I guess you'll have to get. A new one from ODOT, uh, but I've got all the information.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, guys, thank you so much.
Alright, thank you, bye, everyone.